It is six o'clock and this meeting will come to a further. All of our trustees are here. So we will proceed with the public comment. This is the public's. The audience, please be quiet. The meeting has started. This is the public's opportunity to tell the board their thoughts about the budget. And what they would like to see happen is taxpayer money within this public entity. I needed to make an announcement again. The doors need to be unobstructed for us to comply with fire codes. So please do not stand on the doorways. Anyway, so we have received many comments, both in support and against what we have preliminarily done with the budget. This is another opportunity for the board to listen. We will not be responding to your comments in the meeting today. So I will be calling a name and then saying who's up next. That person can, you know, wind their way up to the front. And once you've spoken, it would be considerate. It's up to you. It would be considerate of others to leave so that we can let other people in because we can only have so many people in the room at a time. So persons addressing the board are expected to observe a level of stability and decorum appropriate for a public meeting. No personal attacks or disruptions from audience members will be tolerated. Speakers, state your name and community and only address budget-related topics at this budget hearing. You have up to three minutes each, and the time is now yours. First up, we have Deborah Rose, who will be followed by Ed Dupreeh.
The proposed budget by this board is on. Sounds fair. The proposed budget by this board anticipates closing our libraries on Sundays. The most dangerous course for government is theocracy. The only thing worse than a tyrant is in fact tyrant who thinks they are on a mission from God. Individuals who profess to be Christians, you ought to be aware that Jesus took on a direct challenge to question the certainties of the Pharisees who restricted access to the temple and heaven, much as you are choosing to restrict access to information. Anytime a government institution is tyrannical, it is in direct conflict with Jesus. This board's majority effort last year to use religion as a reason to close our libraries on Sundays risked a civil rights lawsuit threatened against them by Americans United for separation of church and state. Thus, the board was essentially forced to abandon its plan to close our libraries on Sundays. Yet now this board is implementing Plan B, justified by the misappropriation of public funds, irresponsibly overspending on legal fees, and avoidable higher insurance costs. So now closing our libraries on Sundays can be rationalized. It's possible that this new stunt will incite yet another potential civil rights lawsuit threat. The board's decision to limit access to the library services for the working people of Cootney County who fund this once well-managed library network are reckless. The destructive course the board majority is on might be an easy one to travel. Maintaining a well-run library system, however, requires a level of discernment and competency lacking from this board. God gave each of us a hunger for knowledge and a right to intellectual freedom. The board majority's budget proposal is working against his objective by limiting the services this network provides in favor of wasteful spending and a misguided agenda. I'm asking each of you to muster up the commitment necessary to ensure this year's budget will successfully allow proper service from this library network for those of us who fund it. As fiduciaries, I recommend the board stop looking for things that frighten and offend them. Instead, trustees, the board should start looking for ways that can inspire success and personal growth in others. Providing broad access to information for those who fund and depend upon the library network would bring accolades for a job well done for each trustee. Again, anytime a government institution is tyrannical, it is in direct conflict with Jesus and the best interests of its constituents. It's time to repent and stop the systemic erosion of the CLN or resign.
Thanks. I forgot to mention, please stop laughing because that will extend the meeting and then some people may not be able to speak. So we have Ed Dupreeh up next. We have Ed Dupreeh up next, and then after that is Michelle Libbert.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I won't be nearly as eloquent, probably not as long as the last speaker. But a lot of times we hear about transparency and integrity and honesty and things like that. And I'm looking at the budget. I'm looking at things. I've watched what's gone on here over the past year or so, or whatever it's been, and the stated goals or motivations of many people. And what I see is a strategical success for the most part of running off people and replacing them with pals, shall I say, like-minded pals who are instituting, imposing, if you will, that ideology. So it's not fooling anybody. You want to close Sunday? You told us why you'd want to close Sunday a long time ago. It's not money, okay? It's imposition of ideology, okay? And just be honest with the people because the people are paying attention. We all know what's really going on here and why things are really being done, okay? And what the motivations really are. So at least if you're going to do it, state it. Have that courage and integrity.
Right, now we have Michelle Libbert. Please, audience, if we could keep the clapping down. Michelle Libbert, followed by John O'Brien.
Imagine opening your Cootney County property tax bill and noticing a savings of $18.52 for the entire year from the CLN budget. What could you do with this window? Maybe treat yourself to a large deluxe pizza, two senior movie tickets. You could buy a single paperback book or even consider downloading a Kindle book. But ask yourself, is this small savings really worth what you're giving up? And this is what we would be giving up. Thirty-three percent fewer books and materials at our libraries. Do we really believe that libraries don't need new books? Imagine a child being unable to find the latest release of their favorite series or a student missing out on essential resources for their education. Significantly reduced library hours. Fewer books might suggest fewer visitors, so why keep the doors open? But think of the consequences. Libraries are safe spaces for learning, exploration, and community. Reducing hours means cutting off access to these essential services. A 30% decrease in staffing. With fewer books and hours, many of our local librarians, who are our friends, our neighbors, and our community members, will lose their jobs. This is just the beginning. Each year, the situation will worsen. The CLN already reduced the budget last year, meaning the available increase this year in tax dollars is lower. If you don't act now, this year's insufficient increase will result in lower available funding next year. This will compound year after year, leading to a downward spiral of decreasing revenue and increasing costs. What is the endgame? We could face the closure of certain branches, or worse, the destruction of our entire library system. Is $18.52 worth risking the collapse of a vital community resource? Thank you.
Right now, we have John O'Brien. I mean, please. I'm not sure that people can hear over that. So John O'Brien is, we'll have him up now, and then followed by Nick Madson.
Just give me a chance to speak. As you finalize this budget you're putting together, I'd like to ask you to prioritize books and programs, convenient hours, and a helpful, friendly library staff to emphasize prioritizing high-priced legal counsel and its high price. Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, were you done?
Did you want to say something to me?
No. No, I just, I was going to call the next person, and then you were still standing there. I didn't want to cut you off. All right, so now we have Nick Madson, followed by Richard Coles. Nick?
All right, let's go back there. I wanted to read an email that I sent to the board on February 1st of this year. To the administration team and board trustees of Community Library Network. Our local county library system has been my profession and one of my passions since July of 2006. Through the 18 years I've been employed by Consolidated Free Library Districts doing business at its community library network, there have been several moments where a reduction in force has been considered. The 2008 recession led to a merger between Cootney-Shoshone area libraries and the Falls Falls Public Library. During that time, a reduction in force and a shifting in responsibilities was considered. Amidst businesses closing and libraries furthering staff during 2020, the conversation came up again for Community Library Network. On both occasions, the administration and board trustees of Community Library Network doubled down on a long-held belief that libraries are more than buildings and books. Libraries are people. During difficult economic times, Community Library Network prioritized staff so staff could prioritize the community. I implore administration and the board of trustees to prioritize the communities that Community Library Network serves. Stay firm with previous organization administration and affirm that libraries change lives every day through the people who help people help themselves. Thank you for your time.
Can we get the next sheet, the next sign-up sheet? So we have Nick Mad now, or no, sorry, we just had Nick Madson, Richard Coles, thank you, followed by Mary Bear, if I didn't miss rounds up.
Yeah, I'm going to surrender my time back to you. And the way I want you to handle it is I have a question for you. I want to know what you think your role in this library is? What you think your job is? What your priorities are? Mrs. Madison, Mr. Handley, and Mr. Plast, you can each have my minute.
You will not be responding to the public?
It is related to the budget because that's the basis on which you're going to decide. So we need to hear from you.
Be good.
You will not be responding to the public at this time?
Then will you?
Fair question. When are we going to know what your thoughts are besides just your dictum? We don't know who you are. And we know by your actions that you want to destroy a library. That's what you've been doing. And we'd like to know why. I've watched for over 50 years as we went from a bookmobile to all of the libraries that we have in this library system. You're tearing that down. That's dishonest. That wasn't why you were elected. You were elected to take care of, dishonestly elected, to take care of children who may have had access to pornographic books. And you haven't done anything about that. You haven't, you haven't put in the walls to protect the children from going to other places in the library. You haven't done anything. Why don't you spend some money doing that? Why don't you build rather than tear down?
Thank you.
All right, next we have Mary Bear. Followed by Mark Fair.
Community is growing. So why are you reducing hours and reducing the amount of money you're going to spend on books? More people should have more books. More people should have more access to the library. You're here to serve the entire community. Some of those people would like to come to the library on Sundays. Some of those people would like to have new materials in the library. Consider the fact that the budget in the past served one size community. The size of that community is changing. It's getting bigger. I would expect the amount of money you spend on books would go up, and the amount of hours available would also increase. Thank you.
Now we have Mark Fair, followed by Cara Claridge.
Hello, Mark Fair, Cootney County. I would like to just echo what my wife just said, and that is, we've been using the library for years. And in those years, the community has grown massively. And yet, we're now seeing cuts to the library. No, fewer books. Fewer books for me to read. I get a book multiple times a month and read it. And if we reduce the budget and there's fewer books available, that means it's fewer books for me to read. And I'm just one of the 40,000-plus people in the county. So please consider increasing the budget so that there's more books. And when you do that, increase the budget so that there's more time for people to check out. Thank you.
All right, so Cara Claridge, followed by Jeff Webb.
Hey, good evening. It's nice to see everyone tonight. But I'm sorry about saying I think you're the hardest working board in the county. Time spent in meetings working together as unpaid public servants for our library network is impressive, but thank you. This is a budget meeting. I was thinking back on some of the highlights I have noted. In 2023, staff were given pay raises to close down the urban renewal district funds, managed all the costs associated with the flooding, and did not raise taxes while doing any of this. As a taxpayer to this district, I appreciate this. New legal counsel was given an opportunity to guide you, and some could argue too much has been spent in this category. But legal help to craft good policies to be applied before July 1st, when Idaho's new library law went into effect was needed. I think you have created a model in so many ways for Coeur d'Alene Library and really all of Idaho's libraries to pattern themselves after. Probably my favorite two decisions, although I'm not sure about the cost factor, are disassociating with the American Library Association and eliminating banned book speak, since there are no books being banned anyway. And lastly, the incredible work put forth to protect children regarding your materials review and exhibition policies. These are all good examples of well-studied taxpayer funds. I know there are a few local detractors who find small mistakes to exploit, and to them, I would say, run for trustee next year and see if you can get 14,000 people in Cootney County to support your idea. But until then, my conclusion is that you are carrying out the will of the voters who decisively voted for you, and I like the progress I've seen. This library board has shown wisdom and restraint, and the citizens of Cootney County breathe a sigh of relief, at least regarding one avenue of influence. Michelle, you have stayed principled and powerful towards those that oppose you, and being promoted to chair for this season surely reflects this. Tom, I remember when you first expressed your desire to run for trustee. You didn't have to do this with the later half of your life, but somehow I feel it's an extension of your service to our country, but on a local level now. My children have the opportunity for a healthier library experience because of your insipidity. Vanessa, thank you for showing balance and perspectives and for putting in the hard work with everyone else and always looking amazing while doing it. Tim, thank you for your steadfastness to give of your time and talents for this term. Karen, your faithfulness to till the soil years in advance through prayer opened the door with ease to be the newest trustee. I'm sure of it. So my final thoughts would be that this library network is important to the community, but at the same time, just 50 years into the founding of our country, this book, which is McGuffey's third eclectic reader, was all kids had to learn to read with. And, you know, it sold 120 million copies in 200 years, so it's a privilege to have a library, but a few good books can go along with it. Thank you.
All right, now we have Jeff Webb, followed by Judy Meyer.
Thank you very much. As a youth growing up in an area that had blue laws for Sunday, that dictated that you could buy hammer, but not a nail, at least I knew the libraries were open. And the bookmobile was going to be in my area the next day, and that's how I grew up, reading and learning about the world. Were some of the ideas that I encountered different from what I was experiencing? Absolutely. But Andrew Carnegie felt strongly enough that he donated his billions to creating 1,400 public library systems in the country. I would like to shake your hand in the future and say that you did good in following his example and not destroying the library. Thank you.
All right, now we have Judy Meyer, followed by Dan Studer, if I read that correctly.
I'm Judy Meyer. I live in Hayden. The Community Library Network is a remarkable example of providing services to our taxpayers. Those taxpayers have authorized millions of dollars invested in our library network. To my knowledge, there is no public outcry to cut library services or collection additions. To the contrary, most voices I hear are happy with the service. This hearing about the budget is about priorities. The board priority about budget cuts might reflect their board personal ambition about tax policy, but doesn't correlate with the public expectations. The role of this system is to provide the best library services possible within the taxing authority granted to the trustees by the taxpayers. For years, our system managed library growth within its operating budget. In my view, your objective, board members, is to serve your public constituents. That means serve the users who need the library, like home stores, certainly curious who want to learn to read contemporary novels and literature. Our nation is struggling with misinformation. People learn to accept or reject suspect information by reading both sides. The library can touch almost every citizen. To do that depends on making the public multimillion-dollar investment accessible and available to the taxpayers. Taxpayer money and priorities built this wonderful system. Your job is to steward this investment. Let me repeat, your job is to steward this investment. If you were the street department, would you feel like the public demand was to defer the pothole repair, let intersections clog up, and never strike the roads just to save a few dollars? Your new budget is the same. Cutting services for the small family of people who want to pay less taxes regardless of the consequences. The Community Library Network is a remarkable example of providing services to our taxpayers. The role of this system doesn't correlate with the public expectation. I'm sorry. Try that again. We're talking about people reading both sides and getting information. All right? To do that depends on making the public multimillion-dollar investment accessible and available, as I said before. Taxpayer money and priorities built this wonderful system. Let me repeat, your job is to steward the investment. If you feel like the public demand was to defer the pothole repair, let intersections clog up, you're the concept. Your new budget is the same, cutting services to the small family of people who want to pay less regardless of the taxes. I'm sorry, I missed the main page. I will conclude here. When I find my next page, I'll be back. Thank you.
All right, can I get the next sign-up sheet, please? Next sign-up sheet, please. And now we have Dan Studer, followed by Pat Raffey.
My name is Dan Studer. I'm from Coeur d'Alene. I used to Coeur d'Alene and live in the library pretty extensively. I think I've taken on posts in 20, actually over 20 books this past year. My tendency is to grab an author. I'm reading Michael Pollan, and I'll read a lot of his selection. I've read Vince Flynn, and I look forward to seeing more CJ Box. He's another favorite author that I have. And when I read in the paper about reducing budgeting towards purchase of new books, that immediately concerned me because I looked forward to seeing CJ Box and his next books that runs out. I have no problem at all with paying taxes in this community. I spend a lot of time with him, both Coeur d'Alene Library and Hayden Library with my grandchildren, McEwen Park. I think that's a wonderful investment, and I would spend more money contributing to that tax-wise. I have absolutely no problems with paying taxes for a good product. If that decreases, then I do have problems. I like to pay something that really gives my family a big bonus. And I think some of the employees here that I had grandchildren with, and the children who are both in Coeur d'Alene, and some of the employees here, I must, you know, commend them and their ability to grab children, you know, my grandchildren's attention and all that. I would state that I will be disappointed to see those services reduced. Thank you.
Now we have Pat Raffey.
Pat Raffey, Falls. I care about learning, and I care about libraries. This board's proposed fiscal '25 budget is not what library users want or need. Local families have told you how important library programs and materials are for their young children. Yet in fiscal '25, this board intends to cut programs and material purchases. Two days ago, a K-Tech teacher sent an email to this board about how many of his students don't have their own computers. To prepare their homework, these students use library computers, and because they're kind of last-minute young people, they often do that on Sundays. Yet in fiscal '25, this board intends to cut staff and cut library hours and to close libraries on Sundays. This board's fiscal '25 budget actions will hurt library users, students, children, and families. Makes it hard to believe all your talk about caring for young people. Discussions during budget preparations included a refusal by this board to cap Boyle's law bills. Despite the fact that since Mr. Boyle's was fired, this board is spending 25 times what CLN averaged on legal fees across many years, and this board budgeted a lower amount than trends indicate are likely for fiscal year '25 legal fees. This board also budgeted a lower amount for insurance than the estimate you received from the provider you have been talking about switching to for months. A provider with no previous experience ensuring governments, the one who offers no risk management services, that's important because you cut CLN's human resources position out of this budget. Budgeting lower than likely legal fees and lower than estimated insurance amounts indicate this board is hiding how you intend to use public funding. Your actions show this board doesn't care much about the truth. I care about the truth. I think most taxpayers value the truth. By your actions, this board is contradicting CLN's financial management policy. It says trustees put a priority on fiscal integrity and that you value transparency in using public funds. This board's cumulative budget cuts in fiscal '24 and fiscal '25 indicate you are trying to erode our basic library services while you shift growing amounts of taxpayer funds to ideological allies. I object, and I notice and am pleased to see that others also object. Together, I hope we will continue to challenge this board's attempt to undermine our libraries. If this board would like our challenges to abate, you can restore funding for services that matter to library users and cut spending on legal insurance and insurance services.
It looks like we don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Were there others that came here that did want to speak? Is there a sheet back there, as you're indicating? Is there a sheet back there, as you're indicating? Anybody would like to speak?
Mary?
Go ahead.
Be real short. All right, I'm Josiah. And I just wanted to really strongly echo what Pat just said. And my, and how impressed I am with her ability to put together the actual facts and figures that indicate that you are obscuring what you're really doing. Like, that's, that's really impressive. But I would also like to reiterate what Nick said about in times of trouble. And I know that this is a fairly self-created trouble that you're trying to manage. But in times of trouble, double down on your staff. Because they're what's really gonna keep this library running.
So the point of the budget hearing is to hear what you have to say. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'm sorry, Judy, you've already spoken. If there is no one else, then I guess we will head towards concluding the meeting.
Follow my other page, Mary.
Well, you're only supposed to speak once, and I did, to shake your
Come on!
Judy, I'm sorry, you only have one more second left, and so your time is also, what's that?
Let her speak!
Anyway, if there is no, oh, you would like to speak?
I'm gonna read the rest of Judy's.
Actually, could you give your name and community?
Brett Elliott. Well, I may have the same problem that you did. In my view, your budget cuts are illogical. Unresponsive to the signals from your customers will cause decades of constraints to your successors in the library public. Deferred maintenance to our buildings, deferred talent development in our staff, deferred collection development have no virtue. As said, stated before, our taxpayers deserve good stewardship. You have a unique opportunity to refine the management of this district for the benefit of our taxpayers. Thank you, Judy Myers.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't yet spoken?
I'm Kim Gruder, and I hadn't intended on speaking this evening, but I'm speaking in regard to, for my children and my grandchildren. I was in grad school. I had to have some important things that I couldn't get anyplace but Hayden Lake Library. And they had to get it from the Library of Congress. And it wasn't books that I could check out. It was the staff that provided that for me. My professors were very impressed. I was impressed, and I will forever be in, in debt to the Hayden Lake Library for that. In addition, I think, you know, as I look around the room, I see a lot of white haired people here. And if I didn't have a good hairdresser, I would also be a muddle. But I, they are very distressed with not having the Sunday library open. These are children who are very bright. One graduated as a valedictorian, the other one was a salutatorian. And their AP classes required that they go to the library and have a library time on Sunday to do it because they were also in other things like DECA and other activities in the school that required them to be busy during the week. Plus, there's six hours of homework conducted. And so I think we need to look at the children that are coming up and in allowing them to have the resources that they need to be successful. Both of, two of the grandchildren that I'm speaking of want to be doctors. And so they're in med school. And it's important that we allow the other children to have that same opportunities. So please, 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 think of the people that are coming behind us as, because we'll be long gone. But we all depend on having good people in our communities that have the resources to be very inclusive of everyone. And what they read may not be what another person wants to read. So I think it's responsibility of parents to, to do the, the resources and the ability for them to monitor and not for us to be restricting them what they can do. I think that's my responsibility as a grandparent, a parent. And it's my children's responsibility as parents to do that for their own children. Thank you.
Right, if there is no one else who would like to speak, go, come on up.
Hi. My name is Ashley Rogers, and I didn't really prepare anything. But I would just like to say that
Speak in front of the mic, please.
Sorry.
We're paying with torture.
Sorry.
You're good, take it right.
As is pretty clear, I'm a lot younger than a lot of the people in this room. I've been going here to this library since, since I was really young. This was a really comforting place when I was a kid. And I was able I'm just really happy that so many people are here and so many people care so deeply. And just, we are here to prove that younger generation does care. I do care. My little brother cares. We come here a lot, and we really like it, and we really appreciate everything that the staff and the community do. And being away in any aspect. I'm just I really couldn't say a word. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else? Okay, I would just like to thank the engaged community. I know it is not easy to get up there and speak, and I appreciate people getting up there and doing that. Since there is no one else that wants to speak, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll hold out on that, there's no more people who want to speak. Name and community, please.
Oh, my name is Helen Mill. And I live at Mill River and go to the Hayden Library and downtown. And it's very tough, I have to tell them. But I don't have children or grandchildren. But I was fortunate to grow up in a family of readers. And we had lizards, and we got stuck in the house, parents who were homeless. And the thing we looked forward to most, and I'm guess I went to a one-room school, was twice a month, bookmobile shut up. And I remember when I actually got to go to a building and see all of those books, I thought I thought I had them. So please, keep the library going. If they were without books, my life would be pretty boring. Thank you.
Okay, last chance, anyone else? Okay, no, there's one more.
Noggin Bell and from the bathroom. You, this board has always been about protecting children and doing the best job they can for children. One of the, it seems to me that you would wanna give assistance to the libraries to the children as much as you can. You're, and yet you're gonna close on Sunday, which is one of the two days a week that they have off. It seems to me if you really have to close one day, close Monday. I'm pretty sure that's not the reason you wanna close on Sunday, but think about that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Have some move that we adjourn, all those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous, and we are now adjourned, thank you.